We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Ron. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You too.
Opposed.
Strangling.
I walked into it to you. You bit by the snake, Kevin?
Um, do we have a resolution to hold a closed meeting for negotiation strategy at the end? So we'll go into a closed meeting and then we'll return to open meeting to adjourn?
I'm opposed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public comment? Consent items? We have a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Ron. Discussion? You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion items? Okay, Crin, we have site crisis plan.
The site crisis plans, um, since so much was done last year to get them aligned and together, this year the only changes are with making sure that the names in the crisis plans are correct and that the dates are correct. Other than that, there are no appreciable differences at all. So those will come on the next, um, the August?
Next board meeting for?
Yes, the August 16th.
Okay, Houston High School staff handbook. Todd?
There's no changes being recommended at all, just updating the dates and staff names.
Houston Elementary?
Let go of the elementary school.
And how about the Houston Elementary Student Handbook?
Um, you have the changes there and then you have a copy of the handbook. No major changes in this year's handbook. I am going with a group of staff members to PBIS training Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday and Friday, and at that time we'll probably be looking at the handbook and probably making some major changes in next year's handbook, but right now there are no major changes in this year's handbook.
Any more questions? Sorry, I didn't ask you.
And if you have questions about the handbook, give me a call or send me the number.
Okay, how about the? Oh, yeah, we got it. Okay, Summit?
Not recommending any changes besides staff names and dates.
Long-term facility maintenance update.
Um, as of last Friday, we were seventy-two percent complete with the project, which means that we are on track for being, um, not done, but able to be handed the buildings back on August 18th. Because of the timing when things were ordered, um, there will be some things that will not be done at the start of the school year, but that will not impede us from starting school. For example, the ceiling tiles for the hallways in the elementary school were not ordered. So when those got ordered, it's, they're out six weeks. So those will get in in September. But we, the grid will be there and we can start school without the tiles in, and then they'll come in on a weekend. It will not be, uh, or after school. It will not interrupt the school day at all. They know that.
Why would they order?
The person that was the project manager from All Trades is no longer with All Trades, and we have a new project manager in place from that particular firm, and things are going better now.
We had timelines on it anyway, correct?
Yep, we have timelines on it, so that's, that's, um, we're sure that everything, everything we need to start the school year will be there.
Do you hear answer, Joe? Anybody have any other questions on it? Okay. Old business items for discussion approval. Team building slash training activity?
I printed the Survey Monkey results off just this afternoon, hoping that we'd get a hundred percent. Five board members completed it, and of the five, two said that they would like team building, three said no. It would be nice to have all seven weighing in, so we really know what the whole group feels. There really wasn't any other than, um, two did vote for developing mutual expectations from MSBA if they, we were going to do a team building. The other question was question five, as far as should the board invest and engage in administrative planning activity, and that was four to one. So four said yes, they should, and seventy-five percent of those said that we should develop in-house board superintendent leadership planning meeting, kind of like what we did before. So that... So what? Where do we go?
Well, I think we, I, I, I think the message is scrap the team building and pursue the plan, strategic planning options. So I don't know. I need to know, but maybe that's a decision.
Yeah? So where do we start with the planning?
With the?
Strategic planning.
The, the board leadership?
Leadership team and the?
And forty percent said as soon as practical. But that was only two people.
But when do we, well?
Can't we assign the superintendent to coordinate?
Yeah, set it up.
Proceed with the process.
And what would be?
So are you gonna set up some time with leadership? Find out when we can all sit down?
I think we have to decide what we want. I mean, the last time we met, it was for the purpose of prioritizing or revisiting some of our core values or aims, I think. So we had that as kind of the, you know, that was, you know, what are the priorities and what, what activities or what things within each site fit that? So we have to kind of decide, you know, what do we wanna? What, what is, what is it that we wanna pursue?
What, what's our intended outcome with this meeting? And then if I know the intended outcome, I know how to plan for it, but right now I'm not sure what, what is the goal?
I would think pursuing STEAM, since that's in our, many of our goals. Pursuing curriculum and ideas and having a discussion about STEAM initiatives, that's one thing that I think I would favor. Hearing ideas, but...
I would rather see more meetings with simpler goals. So what's square one? Can we tackle it? And then once we've tackled that, then three months later, tackle, because I think we try to take on too much and then we get lost and nothing happens. We can never seem to get all the way through a whole strategic plan.
Well, I think we maybe overslasted.
I don't feel like we ever, I feel like we got lost in the middle. I, I don't, I, I think we were trying to rush and it, it's, it's a lot of work, but I think if we can take the first step and...
So what's the first step?
What do you recommend? I mean, I think STEAM is a good option because that's something new that we haven't looked at. But what would be a smaller step?
Well, I, we're looking at STEAM because it showed up on a piece of paper. Maybe we should have, I mean, yes, it showed up on a piece of paper and then we said, yeah, sounds good. I think it maybe should have been us deciding what that should have been and then putting it on the piece of paper instead of vice versa. I feel like we're kind of reactive instead of proactive. I don't know that STEAM is right for our school, honestly.
Well, I think STEAM was presented as one possibility for a focus area.
It's in a whole bunch of goals.
Well, it just showed up, but it just showed up in our, it showed up, right?
I mean, our board didn't get together and say, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, when you think about things strategically, you really need to take a step back and analyze things. I'm not saying I disagree with STEAM. I think it's really important, but, um, you know, maybe there's, or maybe there's smaller goals underneath that. I don't know, but, um, it's hard for us because we, we're not very good at strategic planning as a board.
Would the framework be for time for the district as a whole or would it be broken down into focus areas like MNBA, Brickmore High School, Brickmore Elementary?
Except if you are going to break it down, then you're not really, the board has to be that umbrella. And so as a, as a board, you're, you're looking as a district. And then as a district, when you come up with yours, then the individual sites look at how they fit within that. But then in looking at the strategic plan, I, I guess I'm, I'm questioning, it, it sounds like you, you're wanting to pick the curriculum for the individual schools. And that's?
No.
Okay. No? Okay.
You don't want to pick the curriculum.
I mean, I'm thinking on what's our facility? What's our facility plan, plan for making a space to pursue STEAM? Or is it gonna be online? Is it gonna be hybrid? I mean, we could pursue things like diversity. We could look at test scores and focus on, you know, what do we need to, what do we need to do to close gaps or improve something that we're not doing? I mean, I...
Is the staff in favor of STEAM?
Yep, that's where the idea came from.
So maybe what we need to do is have the staff present to us all the aspects of STEAM and then the board should decide whether they want to embrace it as a whole. I mean, we don't wanna...
We already embraced it. We already approved the...
The goals, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, but...
So we've approved, we don't even know what we approved. Well, I don't, I shouldn't speak for the rest of you.
World's best workforce is just to get it written down for the state, in my opinion. It's not our strategic plan and our goals. And there's other things as well, like the preschool, and we need to decide what's gonna happen. Everybody talks about the preschool, nobody, we never do anything about preschool. So we need to have, there's certain things we need to discuss and maybe that's the session to discuss it in.
Probably the main objective is just get it, get them talking, get us all talking.
I think so.
And, you know, whether we begin talking about the STEAM, you know, well, how the direction we want to go with that, or we bring in part of the school, the preschool, I think we just have to start communicating with the leadership team and where we want to take the school and just, you know, whether it be like Mike Lee said, facilities, what do we need to do? You know, their embracing STEAM lets us find out more of what their thoughts are on it.
So you wanted this more, what have you, now a visioning type meeting where the school board and the leadership team sits together and just kind of says, this is the vision for where we need to go as a district?
I, that was just a thought.
We, in the past, I mean, when you start strategic planning, you start with your mission, right? Your mission statement and, and we never, honestly, we tend to get caught up in those first few steps and never make it past it, in my opinion. So, you know, I said start at square one, but I'm a little hesitant because I think if we, we can get easily bogged down in the beginning, so...
Well, then that goes back to the question of, do we feel we need to change our mission statement? Because that's...
I don't feel the need to change our mission statement.
Okay, and then we, then start starting, instead of starting from that square one of coming up with our mission and our vision, if we feel we have our mission, vision and our core values, we've got that foundation. With this mission, vision, core values, where do we go? Is that the conversation that you want to have with the leadership?
I think that'd be a good place to start personally, you know?
I'm bouncing back on Ron's suggestion and maybe you said it too, having the different administrators come in and make a case for what they would most like to see, that we would then, as a district, most like to embrace and see what ideas they have. So it educates us on where their vision is in delivering it, if it was the STEAM thing. But preschool could also fall into that. You could have administrator come in and say, this is what, or that group come in and say, this is the need for preschool and, you know, present it so that we can then have, okay, these are the things that...
And what we want to see our school achieve or where we want to go direction wise? I mean, we do the same with like Todd and those guys. With facilities, we say, give us a list of what you'd like to see, and that's, I think would be a good starting point. You know, we already have, we talked about our mission and goals and, you know, values and stuff, but where do they see the school going? What would they like us to work on?
So you want...
This is a starting point.
Presentations instead of a working all together?
Yeah, just so we get up to speed on their thoughts.
I think it needs to be, I think it needs to be brainstorming together though a bit?
Well, I mean, well, we don't...
Instead of just a presentation and we listen.
Well, brainstorming, we'll follow that. You know, if Rick or somebody comes in, one of the leadership members comes in and says, this is what I would like to see, where our direction, I see our school going, and we can take that in and then somebody else says, and then we can kind of brainstorm amongst us with them, so we're all on the same page on a common goal and what we'd like to achieve, you know, as a school. So the board and the leadership team are working together to get where they want to go. But we gotta communicate before that can happen. We gotta find out what their thoughts are before we can step in. You know, like Ron says, he may not know everything he wants to know about that, that particular program. This would give us all an opportunity to ask questions.
So who would be the project leader on this?
Well, my, I would think the superintendent, because she's kind of like the facilitator in that type of program.
I would assume you want this to be a working piece of paper that will continue for years to come?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's just, to me, I look at it like a five-year plan, Joe, or a ten-year plan.
To me, that's what happened probably in the past when we didn't have a champion leading it or maintaining it, so it wasn't a continuous working project, you know?
Well, right now I feel like, well, I should speak for myself, just enough to be dangerous, you know?
Well, I think we pick it apart.
You know, we don't know what the budget is, if, if somebody wants to introduce some new part of this thing, what's it gonna cost us? Do we have to rearrange facilities to do this? Do we need to bring in specialists or somebody else to facilitate this or what? We don't, I just don't feel like we have any basics down. Somebody says, yeah, this is it, and we embraced it and...
Well, we were supposed to have a follow-up to our last large group get-together, and when it was proposed a couple of times, there was just too much else going on and there was no time to schedule it. So we did not, we dropped the ball and followed through. I'd like to hear what Kevin and Gary have to say. You've dealt with economic development, so you know how.
Go ahead, Gary.
Well, I like the idea of listening to the administrators and hearing their, their priorities, their, their visions, you know, what they see as being important, then having the discussion. So I think listening is a good place to start.
I just think if an administrator comes in and says, well, I don't want to even do this, well, we know where that's gonna go then, it's not, it's not gonna happen. So I'd like to know that everybody's on board and what their ideas are on it.
Kevin? Thoughts?
Oh, I don't know. Sometimes I think it's just a struggle for the board to try and be relevant, to be real frank. You know, we get stuff poured into us all the time. We don't get anything drawn out of us. You know, I remember Ron talking about the MSBA and you were really excited about some of the stuff you went to. Where did that go? You know? And, and so, you know, and I'm not picking on you, Ron, I mean, everybody, you know, but, so, you know, at some point, if it's a presentation-type model, it has to be interactive where we ask the leadership individually, what, what, give us some innovation. What do you, what would you really like, what's your desire? What's your passion to make this a better school? And then have us, have a discussion about it and, and allow for some board members to come up with some ideas, because I'm, there's ideas here. It's just, we don't get them out.
Well, that's what I mean, I mean, like Gary said, sit down, start the conversation. Pick their brains. What are your thoughts? Kind of like what we do with, and I point out facilities, because that's basically what we do with these guys. If you had an unlimited budget, where would you like to see this school go? And really, that's what you're asking, right, Kevin? It's kind of like, if you could do anything you wanted in this school, whether, you know, what would you like to see us do?
Well, to start off with, yeah, I mean, if that's what we're gonna do. I mean, there's other options, obviously, but if that's what you're gonna do, you don't right away say, well, here's how much money we've got, now put your, put your square idea, this great idea in this little round hole. Then you might as well not even have the conversation. You know, I mean, we know we have financial constraints. Everybody knows that. But that doesn't mean we can't, you know, have ideas and dream and then have, you know, something move that we can, you know, work towards. I mean, I think, you know, that's, you know, when I look at the education in Finland and different areas and what they're, a lot of, all over the place, there's a lot of really interesting things out there. And we're, we, we have a tendency as a, as a board, I think, and as a state, if you will, and I think as a country, sometimes get really blocked in. This is how we do it. This is how we've always done it, and that's good enough. Well, it ain't gonna be good enough, in my opinion, in the future. You know, and that's what, those kids, that's, that's the future. Anyway, there, said my piece.
Yeah, very much.
Well, I do want to hear from everybody. You do, you do like it.
No, I want to hear from everybody. So you kind of have an idea?
The one thing I wanted to just correct you on or discuss further is you said Crin was a facilitator. I would rather have Crin participate than someone else facilitate, because to me, the facilitator is a facilitator, and I want her to be an active participant at the table.
So do we hire someone to facilitate?
Or we get somebody from the school. I really think that...
You need to hire somebody.
I, I don't know how the board feels, but I, I, I think, I think we're making a mistake to put Crin in the facilitator role instead of a participant.
Already voted.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't take a board member out either. It needs to be somebody not on the leadership team at all.
Leadership team is neutral.
It's a referral system.
Oh, yeah. He'd probably do it just for fun.
Do you need a facilitator?
I would, I would double-simulate next to him.
That's the other thing. I mean, if you're having a freewheeling discussion, really just doing that and taking notes and see if there's something, someplace to go from there. Not sure what a facilitator would do in that process.
Well, and maybe Tom can do it. Maybe he can just kind of push us along, but I just...
If we can just arrange it and we just see where it goes. I'd say bring in the, you know, talk about what we just discussed with them.
When would you like this to happen?
Well, we might as well get going on it. Now we're back into full swing of school.
Yep.
You know, new teachers coming in. It'll probably have to be after August, I'm assuming.
Sometime in September?
Yeah. At least have our first get-together, and I think, goes back to kind of like what Joe said earlier, is let's, once we come in in September, then we plan something for like October and then plan, you know, start putting it in the books so it continues. And then Anne can be here to make, you know, notes, so we kind of talk about where we want to go and ideas and... I'm sure the first few will be kind of all over the place, but sooner or later it'll be crowded in.
I might call you.
That's fine.
This weekend.
That's fine. You don't want to drag me down. Anybody else have any input on that? Joe, you good with that?
Yep.
Ron? Mike? Amy? Michael? Gary? Kevin? No? You're not?
What?
I said, you good with that?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay.
I'm used to it, I have kids.
Just pointing to your wife.
Okay. Moving on along, MNBA teacher handbook? Any changes on that one?
No. There's, um, the only changes are deal with the, um, just dates and updating names.
Okay. We can approve that next.
Yep, because there's, oh, it's approved now? Oh, that, that, yeah, it was in the last one.
Yeah.
That, oh, that's the one, I misspoke. That's the one that had the major rewrite. That's the one that now is all one.
But it's all?
Right. I was thinking of that. Yep.
But it was first presented.
Yeah, so we need to...
Right, so this is, this is for approval?
For approval. That's, okay. So do you have a motion to approve the MNBA teacher handbook?
Motion.
Second by Mike Lee, and second by Ron. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Policies for second readings?
Just as a reminder, these are the policies that NSBA suggested needed to be updated this year due to new statute requirements. So we've included gender in these. Yes, these are the ones that include, um, gender. And then the school district testing plan and procedure, that's the one that has been rewritten, so it now does align to the testing that we do, and all the profile is out of there.
So everything's up to date. We didn't have any else to discuss. So we need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Got a motion by Joe?
Second.
Second by Gary. Discussion?
Just one thing, as I was reading through these, um, policy 610 on field trips, at the end of that policy, it says there would be an annual report on all the trips to the board on the annual, on the trips that fall under that policy, which is most of the, many of the trips made within our school district. So I just wanted to know if you'd put it on the board calendar sometime and figure out a good time to present that.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you for the reminder.
Set it. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New business items for discussion approval. These are policies for first readings. Mike Lee, is there anything you want to bring to our attention?
I haven't read them yet.
Okay. First reading, I guess, what I expected.
What?
Usually so far ahead of the game, Mike.
No, I haven't, didn't lately. I did have a question on, and the policy on enrollment of non-resident students, seems like there was a big section there on truancy stuff, so are we all in line with the truancy requirements and dates?
Yes.
And that was...
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why we made all the changes that MNBA made, so, yep.
If there's any questions on them? Moving on along, announcements?
Today's August 2nd, which means it's the first day to file for candidacy for school board. So I wanted to...
Remind people?
Yes.
I'd be interested.
Remind people that there are...
And I'm sure they'll take your money before you leave today.
Three seats, three seats up. And the other thing, we've got, the audit is going on right now, so they're usually camped out in here during the day. And Bradley Carlton, who has been our auditor for the past, a lot of years, um, yeah, has taken a job elsewhere, so we're, um, one of the auditors was here last year, so at least we have some continuity. I was worried that they would give us a whole new crew, but one of the auditors was here last year, so she is, um, used to some of the seeming anomalies that are strange. And then the other thing is with the insurance company, we haven't really talked about having cyber insurance as far as, we do have a, a small amount insured, but do we want to do a higher limit for like... want to do a higher limit for like hacking into our system? Right now, I think we've got $25,000 worth of coverage. And the, um, insurance guy said that there are some large districts going to, but if you're going to do the cyber insurance, you go to like a half a million dollars worth of coverage. And then the price of that is a lot. I, I don't know if we have that much chance of cyber hacking here that we would have to get the policy, but I told them...
Is there anything that's covered by AN SenTech? I mean, is there anything, because we work with them and everything kind of...
The SenTech does have insurance on their, um, their servers. Yes.
That's where most of the stuff is.
I was gonna say, isn't most of the stuff under their umbrella? So it wouldn't necessarily fall, get into us per se?
Which is why we typically have just gone with like $25,000.
I would ask them to, I mean, personally, I would just speak to myself.
Twenty-five thousand does seem pretty low. We're not doing much with 25,000.
Right, that's what he said. But he said if we're gonna bump it, we, most places bump it a lot. And he said it doesn't make any sense to bump it a little, but bumping a lot also bumps the premium a lot.
I mean, I would say if we had it all in-house, you know, most of the stuff is controlled.
So what's the liability there? I mean, are you, so you get hacked in and are, and are you, is the liability that someone would sue you that their information was, was compromised? Is that, is that what you're looking at?
Plus the loss of the information, restoring your, whatever you lost, you know, your books or whatever, everything's online now, so.
And most of what we have stored as far as, um, the student management system is all through Infinite Campus. The financial is all through Region Five. So that's nothing that we store in-house anyway.
Joe, is that backed up?
Oh, yes, yes.
I mean, is there something you'd want to ask somebody else other than your insurance guy? Just saying.
I would, I would find out what ACE has got. Nice to ask, see how much they have.
Would you like me to call some other area superintendents and see if they've got cyber?
Never ask, see what they say. And then ask ACE, Joe said, what, what they were to cover.
When will we have a tech person? It would be a nice thing to give them to do.
Uh, that's an update for meetings that I need to talk about.
I, I would think they should be able, you shouldn't have to do that. They should be able to do that.
Delegate.
Okay. MREA sent us their reminder for their fall conference at Craigens in November. The early bird registration is this Friday. So if you think you want to go up to Craigens for the MREA fall conference, let Ann know. Looking at the, the timeline for it, I think it's November 7th.
Thirteen through the fifteenth.
Okay, 13 through the 15th. Um, that just doesn't work in my schedule. So I'm not going to be going up.
Fifteenth is a board meeting too, I think.
Yep.
Anything else on that?
Not on that. Meetings and committee.
Committee updates.
Um, to let you know, I'm now one of the superintendent representatives on HVAC Finance Committee. And so I was at that meeting last week. It's interesting. And I will, uh, right now, we're looking at ways to save money, as is true in virtually every educational setting. I also had a meeting with, um, a representative from Dependable Solutions. And they are a, um, an IT, um, consulting group. Um, they work a great deal with K-12 schools in Wisconsin and in, um, Iowa. They haven't gotten much into Minnesota yet, but they are the IT consultants and support for Able Incorporated. Um, but then they, they gave me a, a proposal for different services that they could do. And after looking at the different interviews we've had, um, the meeting we had with this person from Dependable Solutions was the, the first bright spot we've had in this whole process since January. They can provide a whole range of services. And, um, they would have, what they're proposing is somebody that is 20 hours per week for us. And then another, um, higher tech that can fill in, but then it's, it's different proposals. But I wanted to know what the board felt about, um, doing contracted services instead of getting an employee.
Well, what's the cost, you know?
And, and that's one of those with the different proposals. Um, and we have to look into what things are actually still provided by that contract with ACE. With that, we could go up to 78,000, but then that would cover a lot of the stuff that we're already getting covered with ACE. Or then we could go down to, I think the next proposal down was, was 65,000. But then everything, all of our, our tech and then strategic planning for tech as far as looking at, um, what things are on the, the horizon, what other schools are doing, um, what other research they're looking at for their schools in that entire K-12 area. Also looking at ways that we could get extra funding with E-Rate. They would be looking at all of that with that.
So what do we get paid at ACE now?
Well, that, that's an overall package that, that covers the network. It covers the servers and it's, we get a lump sum. So I need to...
Break it down.
Ask them to break that down so I can see individual line items.
Yeah, before you can make that determination, you have to know what they're gonna do and all that. Who's doing what?
But before I, before I jump into that, what I wanted to know is, would you, as a board, be willing to go with contracted services instead of hiring our own person in-house?
Oh, it's been brought up in discussion before, you know, as far as contracting it out. To others, I know a lot of companies that do that. But I know there's an advantage of having somebody in-house too. So, I mean, that's just my opinion. We can ask around. Amy, your thoughts?
I'm so out of the loop. Um, and I don't have enough information to have a thought.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I don't know what the quality of candidates were. Um, I think there's other options we could try. I mean, we could, instead of working with the company, we could probably contract with an individual. Um, I, I guess, like Joe was saying, I mean, we don't know what the costs are at ACE. I know there was a company, we were, it was something in the office that was at the payroll or something associated with that. We got a quote, you know, does that company do this sort of stuff too? Um, I definitely, I definitely wouldn't just go with the first...
No, no, no.
No, this is the first one because we did look at CSS, which is the company that a SenTech purchased out of Michigan. And then their first, um, they're the ones that offered 10 hours a week, um, and 10 hours a week for $40,000. But that was just the low level tech support. If we needed anything above that, it was on an hourly basis of 185 dollars per hour for most things and up to 150 for some others. And I started looking at what we would need and it just, it, that didn't seem cost effective at all.
Ron, you have any thoughts?
Well, I'm in favor of exploring the possibilities of that. I mean, I guess I'd like to see comparatives of what we get either way and how much it's gonna cost. I don't think we can make any decisions without knowing that.
Joe, you kind of think the same thing?
Most companies now don't have an IT department. They have, you can dial in from anywhere in the country and fix your computer. So, I mean, I'm, I'm open to looking at, seeing what it's gonna cost.
That's, I would say the same thing. I said, that's where most companies are going. So I don't know about other school districts. I mean, there's some information out there, but...
So you have not had, uh, not had a qualified candidate so far?
No.
I'm glad you guys can hire, just hire, you know, I mean, glad you waited to hire the best person.
We needed to, we have had some candidates that had the, the training, but what's necessary for school and to hit the ground running, they would have had someone, they would have needed someone to be here with them to help train them on everything. Um, and those that came with the knowledge also came expecting salary that would be commensurate to the knowledge.
But is it less than what we're paying to contract?
What they would want as far as base salary with benefits added would be more than what for 20 hours a week.
Well, you're not gonna get anybody for 20 hours a week.
You're not gonna...
Unless, unless, like you said, you come, you outside, unless there's somebody out there that's working for four different companies and they're doing 20, you know, whatever, two different companies, you're doing 20 hours here, 20 hours there.
You want to go with a reputable company, I believe. So they have the guy sick or gone.
Yeah. Oh, you want backup. Somebody that's...
And with the Dependable Solutions, he's got, um, he'll have 14 different technicians so that, and different expertise. So there'd be one assigned to us, but if it's something here that needs help, that's not within that tech's expertise, then one of the others that is in that expertise would come.
Do you have any other questions here? Mike Lynn?
I just wonder how much, you know, what can, what does Becky handle on the ground? I mean, what are the little things that you don't need to be paying 78,000 for? Are those things gonna be covered? I mean, what is this person, what's the responsibility? What's the list of responsibilities? Who's covering those? I don't know where the, the hiccups happen in the elementary school or in the high school for teachers to deliver their teaching.
And Becky was hired as the, the tech integrationist. So I'd like her to...
I know, but that means then she's not available for how to get to a printer or how to reboot a machine.
Right, and that's what this person, that's what, that's what this would, would...
But that's 20 hours a week, not 40.
Right.
So to me, it's okay if those things don't happen in those 20 hours.
Oh, whatever.
Yeah. I mean, you're right. You can remote in and, you know, look at a configured system, but there's, I don't know what the kind of things that the principals are probably aware of that are the, the aggravations and frustrations to make education happen.
Kevin?
If the question is that we should possibly look at outside contracts, I say yes.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that we just look at the one or two.
No, no, no.
Means we do some research and see what other schools are doing, particularly online schools. So we have some opportunity to see what they're doing and then go from there. And then we see a proposal on cost and...
But this support doesn't do MNBA because K-12 provides that support.
Yeah. It's nice to have somebody who knows what's going on anyway. And things have changed. So I don't know. But anyway, I, you know, a proposal, costs.
Try ask around. Can I, I think what we're getting is get more information.
And I just to remind everybody, and I guess we'll revisit it if STEAM really important, but if we're focused on STEAM, this technology person and the ability to think strategically, not look at what other schools are doing right next to us, but think strategically to the next thing is super important. One of the most important roles we have in our school. So we can't just, you know, say this person's gonna fix computers and that's it. And then, you know, it's two different people. So I like the fact that they did write it differently, but, you know, they might not, depending on their ability to think strategically, we might have to outsource that to a different company. You know, if they're not, we need to think about that because it's very important.
They've said that they, in Wisconsin, they do work with some, they've got on Alaska and Holman. And their job there, because on Alaska and Holman have their IT teams already. But then they serve as kind of the consultant and the, the person that comes in talking to the leadership team as far as, um, where they could go next, what, what things they should be looking at, what things they, they should be, um, kind of helping with that IT vision.
Well, see what ACE has offered. You know, see what they're doing, what, what this cost you've given us, you're saying. You said you're gonna check with ACE to see what...
What they really...
Yeah, what they charge us because of their stuff that you're looking at hiring somebody else and paying them whatever, 65 or 77,000. Would we take some of that off of ACE's plate and would we have less cost there that would go into this category type of thing?
Okay.
Okay. Other committee meetings? I know we had the facilities. Gary, you wanna bring everybody up to speed on what's happening there?
Yeah, we talked about the, the house and what to do with that. And basically, it needs to be raised. So we're going to...
R-A-Z-E.
Raised, yeah.
Yeah.
R-A-Z-E, raised, demoed, whatever you can call it. And so we're gonna get another bid from Van Gundy's because the one we have is about a year old. So we want to redo that and also look at demoing the garage that's on the same lot. Do the whole thing at once as possible. And then we also talked about the need for a shut-off bell, uh, under the curb. And that'll have to be done, of course, before the, the house is demoed. Um, and I think we talked about volunteers to go in and see what could be salvaged.
Yeah. We had three, two for sure. Three, I thought, right there. We got hazmat suits.
Yeah.
But we have a professional snaker.
Yeah, right.
Have Kevin go with you.
I don't do rats.
Dang it.
Too bad, because that's what you found.
Yeah. Okay, anything else on the house?
Is there a timeline on this?
Uh, 12:05 was the bid from last year.
Gary, a potential garage project?
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, we talked about the, yes. Is there, is it, um, something you want to get done before school starts or no? Doesn't make, it's not that big of a deal? Well, as soon as possible, but...
I'd get it done before winter is what we talked about at the meeting.
Because right now, it's, there are some payments that we're still, we were paying to heat the house all of last year. So I would like to not have to pay for...
There's nothing else? We might have to water shut off for sure. That's a first agenda. And you're gonna get with Randy testing in town to find out what we have to do to shut that off on the outside.
Thinking about, you know, you know, you're teasing about going in there and looking around. Were you looking to see what's salvageable in there?
What's salvageable? Any of the curriculum that's in there can no longer be given to students because it is covered in...
It's outdated.
So is it all trashed then? So there's nothing salvageable?
Well, they're just gonna verify that. There's, and basically, we told them just...
Room pieces.
So we know that or do we...
Oh, no, we, yeah, yes.
So it's unsalvageable?
The tables might be salvageable to be used, but that's it. It's, we, we can't use any of the curriculum things to give to students anymore because you, you can't give them old sheet droppings.
What kind of tables are they? Commercial?
What?
Collapsible tables like what we might have around the school. Not as nice as this.
Oh, okay. So it's not something that can be refinished or anything? Just sterilized? Okay, the other thing we talked about, signage for the high school building. Do we have pictures that the board could see?
Can I ask one more question with the house? Are you, are you digging a hole and pushing it in or does the stuff off, the stuff off gets taken out?
Yeah, and then they fill it in.
Okay. Just with dirt?
Yep.
And so is there some caution being taken just to make sure that all the nails and...
Yeah, that, that'll be all when they demo it. What they'll do, basically, they'll take the building down, then everything up and load it up and take it out.
I just know, you know, living on a farm, you know, when you have an old building, I mean, you always have all these nails. And just with the kids next door, I just want to make sure that we're, you know...
I think by the time they get done demoing the, the foundation and the cement work, there's not gonna be...
You won't even know it's there.
And then they're gonna fill it in.
Just with dirt so that we can do down the road what we want to do.
That's the next thing he's gonna bring up.
You'll have to book graces.
Oh, yeah. That was, the other thing was, um, possibility of... Oh, yeah, that was, the other thing was possibility of the high school class, or one of Todd's classes, building a new garage.
Could, could we hold off on that until we've had our strategic planning session and talked about plans for the preschool? I mean, I just, I wonder if we're gonna add on to the preschool or do something else and then-
Some kind of garage might be needed, because there's a lot of stuff that gets stored, don't you need space for-
Well, again, it's-
The garage, that, there is being used for the preschool van, and so we do need to have some type of garage for the preschool van.
We're not talking about taking that whole lot, making a garage out of it, maybe if that's your concern, it's just would be like a small, like a regular, regular two-car garage.
I just don't wanna do anything that could be in the way or have to be undone for what we really wanna do with the space.
I think Todd was talking that it wouldn't even be started on maybe till next year or something, is kinda what you actually, yeah.
Second semester, we're in class.
With the class would start, but that doesn't mean it would, because they wouldn't be doing anything right away.
Can't the van sit outside?
That's what they're gonna do with it, they're working on it.
It, it's hard on vehicles to have them sit outside and start in the cold, too, so it's just-
Sounds like it's gonna have to.
Yeah, it'll, it'll happen probably for part of the year, it's just a plan discussion.
So, do we just, just go to the one vendor in terms of looking at the demolition, or?
Oh, what they'll do is they'll go off the bids again, like we did last time, we only mentioned him, because he was the only one, I believe, last time they gave us one, or that we got one from.
And as part of the bid, do we determine where it goes to a proper demolition landfill type of thing?
I think there's only one around here that will take it, and that's in La Crosse County.
Yeah, that's what I say, because there are people who will come in and demo, and they have a farm and a nice big hole back there, and, and it works pretty good. And I, point right outside the town, like, that's a while ago, but anyway, just wanna make sure, because then our liability-
Or we don't wanna be liable for it.
No, we're, we're gonna do it, so, kosher.
While we're speaking of buildings, when I was out wandering around town this weekend, I was looking at the, particularly the backside of this shed out here, has anybody looked at that lately?
It needs shingles.
It definitely needs shingles, and the door is in total disrepair, and, well, I don't know, it's just really rusty out there.
Yeah.
By the, by the basketball court?
And a lot of broken siding and-
For the basketball court, that one?
Yeah. Just curious if there's something was ever gonna be done with it.
I don't hear it.
Can we get a quick update on MNBA enrollment?
Sure.
How are we doing?
Oh, yeah, I've got, um, we gained in, over the weekend, twenty-four, over, over last week. Over last week. Okay, so right now, uh, full-time enrollment, we have twelve thirty-six enrolled and seventy-four part-timers, and that is about a hundred and thirty behind where we were last year at this time.
But with, we've got a larger-than-expected mass withdrawal from not registering status unknown and undecided students, and there was also a summer confirmation project done by K-12, where they sent out marketing emails to families that had recently registered within the last three months, confirming whether or not they would come back, or whether they were coming for sure prior to shipping, and there were approximately thirty that were withdrawn, who said they had reconsidered and were not coming.
They do an evaluation as to what that reconsideration was, why?
Yes, they, they, for as many as they could, they got with electronic withdrawal forms, where the families indicated their reasons for withdrawal, um, most of them had just chosen brick-and-mortar options that were closer to home, that had just changed their minds, a couple had moved out of state.
And they put this into place now in the summer, instead of before, we'd end up having a lot of these, where we'd ship the stuff, and then they would ship it back, and so we're saving that cost now by finding out before it shipped, that they didn't wanna come to us, instead of after it shipped, and then they say, oh, by the way, we don't wanna come anymore.
That's good, some things never change.
So, do you have any more you wanna talk, what on that building, stuff, Gary?
You had some other-
Well, we were gonna jump to signs, I think.
Yeah.
Who, who did you have, um, did these mock-ups, or who did you contact?
La Crosse Sign Company. So, this one, it's kinda hard to see, this is with, um, the metal, um, letters that would say main entrance on the main entrance door, so you'd be able to see that from the This would be on the, the gym entrance, Home of the Hurricanes, once again, that's metal. There are LED lights out there, so we wouldn't have to get it to be a lighted sign, because we already have lights out there on the front of that space. There's one sign that could be in the front yard. Off on the right, you see where it says logo, those could be the logos of the different schools that we have, um, which means we need vector files of each of those, so it'd be the Hurricane sign, the elementary sign, and then this is the other one, this is eleven by eight feet, uh, there's a place for each of the logos to go in, and if you see that kind of grayscale on that one, if you pull way back, you'd see that that matches the shape of the bluff behind it. So, that's how that one was designed.
Should the other entrance say gym entrance?
Instead of Home of the Hurricanes?
Or both? It's kind of, it's kind of weird to me, in that it's, yes, I understand it's the main entrance if you're coming during the day, but as a parent, I, you know, coming to sporting events would, would, I, I don't really think of that door, it's the door by the gym, that's the one you always walk in.
So, you'd rather have it say district entrance instead of main entrance?
No.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to, you know, I guess, you quickly learn as a seventh grader, I guess it did take me a while, actually, to figure out when I should go to which door, and it's more clear now when they're locked, and you have to go to this door, um, but for people out of town, if it says main entrance, and there's this big sign over here, if they've never been here before, they're gonna go to that door for games, instead of going to the other door. Maybe they won't, maybe they won't even see it over here, but when I think of the high school, I think of that entrance down there, it's kind of the entrance, so I, I don't know how to make it less confusing for people, but being able to reference which entrance and have them both name something would be helpful.
Todd, do you have a second?
Um, yeah, just, so, this was La Crosse Sign Company, and a piece of what they were trying to do is so we could get that floor, that's why that big monument is out here, because right now, there is nothing out here that says this is, you know, the main entrance. The only thing we have is, we have a sign over there at that end that says, you know, Houston High School, so people are gonna naturally gravitate to that end when they're outside of town for community ed or anything that they, they don't know, but by putting a big sign over there that people will see, that's above cars, they're gonna see that, visually see that and pull them into that, and that's what they do, and they were helping with this. I told them your exact concern, I said, this is what we need to do, we need to make sure we're drawing people, and he goes, okay, this is what you're gonna probably have to do, something like this to draw them in, and that, you know, called the monument, I mean, it's a big, big structure that would say, you know, you know, Houston Public Schools without logos, and that would make a huge difference that way.
But you wanna draw the right people in, right? If it's for a basketball game or something, you don't want them coming down here.
They aren't gonna, I believe they will come down here.
I, I don't know.
If they do, they can walk back up.
Yeah. I think the gym itself is-
The gym itself is bigger than any other structure we got here.
I, I'm just saying for, and, and I know this is probably the wrong example, but Owl Festival, there are people so confused, they're like, you know, they're trying to come in this door, 'cause they see parking over here, and they really meant to go in over there, but let's say it's a speech comp, something on a Saturday that's a little less, you know, games, obviously, you go to the gym if you know that's the gym, but, um, if it's a speech competition, you know, which door are they supposed to use, and how do they know which door they're at? If it says, like, what do you call that door down there? A gym entrance?
Well, that's door one, the gym entrance is the door-
Door seven.
On the hand, if we had those signs above it, you know, you could say, come to the entrance that says, you know, Home of the Hurricanes, come to the entrance that says-
So, it's the Home of the Hurricanes entrance?
Well, so, so it is.
Could they, could they add another, like, not a monument, but a smaller one in, in place of, or that fits with the Houston High School at the teardrop, that would be gym? I don't know.
Something that says, main entrance office this way, district office this way, gym this way, or something.
Um, yeah, or something like that.
The district office, and that, nobody's really gonna know outside of Houston.
No.
But he's saying you're putting a monument up to try to draw people to that entrance.
Well, you're trying to let them know what the main-
So, you're thinking of a, a, one of the, a big sign where the Houston High School sign is now, but then it says with an arrow, gym entrance, arrow this way, district entrance?
Maybe if we rebuild the pre, the house next to the preschool, we put the administrative offices there, and we can roam for expanding, I, I mean, there's things we don't know.
I think, the only reason this came about, if everybody remember, when we had a group of people come to town, I don't know when that was, one of their friends, remember this, Gary? You may, I don't know, Ron, you may remember this, and they said, the problem they felt with the school is they couldn't find where the, how to come in, there was, there was no main entrance to the district office, there was no, nothing identifying anything in the school, we had one sign out there, which means, when you come to the school, you go in that way, or do you come over here for the office? They thought, at that time, if I may be wrong, but if my memory serves me right, they said, we should have something out here that says, this is the high school, and this is the main entrance to the high school, to the district office, now with the way the security is, that's how everybody gets here. During a game and stuff, it's either buses, or everything that goes that way. Community ed activities, which area do they come in here normally?
This is where they should be coming in, community ed.
For community ed activities, so again, they could say, enter through the main entrance, when that is coming up.
I would like to see it say gym entrance, even if it's small, so then you could, or whatever you would wanna call it, but I would love to have it, have a name other than door seven, or, I don't know if Home of the Hurricanes is the right name for a door, but if it just said gym entrance, it would be nice, or teardrop entrance.
It says door seven right there.
It don't mean nothing.
I mean, it is, I mean, that's on there, I mean, that's door seven.
We're overthinking this, science.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think we're all thinking. You know, I don't think we're all, I mean, people truly all go to the others, I mean, that's the bottom line, we're, we don't have any focus here, and it's a curfew thing as well, people do not come here, because we do not have any kind of thing that says, hey, come this way.
I won't care, I'm not against putting a sign up front here.
Right.
You know?
So, what do you guys think of the signs?
I'm only against having a sign down there directing them to the district office.
Neither do I with that.
You know, in that corner where the teardrop one is.
Because people kinda naturally come down that street.
Right.
And if they're going to an athletic event, they can look at the building and say, that looks like the gym. But they can't, they just, to raise that up with gym entrance, or gym underneath it, very little idea.
Well, they're gonna get some bidding for us on the prices, where it's, the way it sits, correct, we're gonna get a cost idea, so.
I like the sign look they had up here, the written by one.
The, with the bluffs?
No, the other one.
The, the red one with the-
I like that.
You like that one?
It shocked me at first, but, but like you said, it's catchy, I mean, I like the other one, I like them both, I mean, don't get me wrong, I like them both, the other one, too, looked like a government building almost, when I saw the, the sign, not this one, the other one, and that looks like a government building, like a driven-by-the-DNR station.
Did you notice those bluffs are kind of mimicking the bluffs in the background as well, and that's what they're doing?
What do you think for the elementary school?
Well, they've got the Houston Elementary in big letters on that building already.
Yep.
My, my issue or concern is those, the spot for the logos, you know, we used to have a spot in there, on the wall, and, I mean, seems like it's hard to keep up, that what there used to be nine or twelve, and now there's six or something, I mean, I would hate to have them out there and have them empty. Are they easily, is it something like it's plexiglass and you slide a piece of paper in, because they're gonna change?
Now, we talked about some type of tile system, maybe, or something, that you can just put a tile in and remove it and replace it, something simple.
As long as we're just, uh, making suggestions, it seems to me that at this sign, we should say business office, main entrance, elementary school, ECF, that direction, and gymnasium, that direction.
Oh, instead of logos, doing more of like, you are here, and this is where you want to go.
You know, if you think you're at the elementary school, you're wrong, it's that way.
There are a lot of people, especially for like junior high games, they, it's the first time they've came to Houston, and they're driving all over town, and they don't know if they're supposed to be at the high school or the elementary, and you can see them all the time, they're driving back and forth, and stop and ask directions, am I at the right spot? So-
Buy some gas, then.
I mean, I think once they've been here once, they've figured it out, but, um, you know, or maybe they've always been at the elementary school, and they just got switched to high school, and they don't know where they're going, so, I agree, it would be nice to-
I, we need a directional sign someplace here, so people know where the district-
You can bring it up to him, Todd, maybe he can tell us what his thoughts are, I mean, they do it for a living.
Moving LED lights on it.
This was non-let sign.
More options, have them do more mock-ups.
Just a speaker thing, and just you push a button, and I wanna go here, go down two blocks.
That Siri sign.
Oh, yeah, the whole thing changes, gives you directions, and then goes back to this. See what, you know, throw them my thoughts to him, to what he says.
Yeah.
Then you brought that up.
Thanks, Gary.
Hopefully, the parking lot will not stimulate as much discussion, we're, we also talked about what to do with the parking lot right out here, and we're looking at a bid for putting in, uh, base rock in the soft spots, and then gravel on top, so that it would be basically ready for pavement, if that time comes, not, it's just a much better surface than it is now.
We'd like to do that this, before school starts, but working with the contractors, so that we're not stopping them from getting back and doing their work.
Then you have to bid, or you just do?
Yeah, we offered, put bids out, it was like nineteen hundred bucks.
It's not bad, though.
So, the big thing, and the other thing is, uh-
The volleyball court, well, the sand volleyball court, we fill in.
Take the sand out, and put black dirt in.
Take sand out, and black dirt in, so we can actually grow something there.
Nobody uses it anymore?
Cats?
Cats?
Perfect. I like that.
But not enough, not enough that we can just seat it down, so.
They don't use that one.
So, those are the two, couple things that we discussed at the facility meeting prior to this, anybody any questions?
Cats in the neighborhood, what?
Yeah, a couple.
No questions?
Oh, sorry.
Concerns? Okay. Feedback, anything there?
Thank you, uh, we got a thank you from Maryurki, said thank you for the beautiful plant in memory of Arlie, your thoughtfulness is greatly appreciated, Maryurki and family.
Okay.
My job as police officer of the basketball court has been growing along, kids are, they're less and less after nine o'clock, so.
Perfect.
Unless I don't go in line. Dark at night, no.
Well, and when Ron can't be there, I fill in for Ron, and the kids are, are very polite and, and actually helpful, they'll pick up whatever bottles are there, garbage, and throw it out, so.
They even thank me for standing there for twenty minutes while they finish their game.
That was nice of you, huh?
How about your orientation picnic?
Oh, yes, the orientation picnic.
When is that planned?
Monday, uh-
Twenty-nine.
You wanna do it?
Why would we change, Ron? Right?
Since he does most of the work. Yeah, we're good, we're all good with it.
I know, Kevin's retired now, you gotta put- Kevin, you tired now? You got plenty of time? All right, Kevin?
I don't know, I might be out of town that weekend or.
Well, they usually bring out some stuff. Garden to set up the most.
You're going to be out of town then, so just run up there and grab it.
There it is. You know where it is.
Well, I have a little farmer's market at the end of the road.
So that's on Monday.
Get a couple deer down too, legit.
We're planning for about a hundred and eighty.
Keep us posted.
We always plan for that, usually get about ninety.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could do an RSVP so we find out.
Okay.
Yeah, why, that'd be a good idea, Mike.
Should we do it somewhere else or do, I mean?
It's convenient at my house, I guess. I don't have anything against it. If Kyle's come over and help me make my garden look good, it'd be fun.
Sure.
You've got new neighbors, will they mind?
Will they mind? They'd love it.
Okay. Anything else?
Are you going to communicate out your marching orders or how do you want to work this?
Yeah, I'll work on it.
We have another meeting, we have a meeting the week before, right?
Yes, yeah.
I was thinking of something easier this year, ham and bean soup.
Perfect.
Okay. Well, we may have, we may have some product from the house we can put in there. Okay, there's nothing else? We have motion to go into a closed meeting, negotiation strategy. Motion made by Joe. Second by, anybody?
Second.
Second by Gary? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're going to close and we return into open, meeting and then adjournment.
Actually go into the conference room. It's open for us now.
We're not making decisions after this.
No.